It's one minute out, Mary. You can start, um, start recording and, um. And start the one ninety-one running. And we need to actually seven, just. Give me your cue and I'll, uh, open the meeting. At seven? Okay, I'm gonna start up then. Good evening Belcher Town. Welcome to the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of your planning board. Today we have a rather limited agenda. We have one timed event, a conversation with our, our point, uh, brewing. We had asked them to, um, talk with us and share their, their plans for, uh, they're expanding their venue for their business. We had a timed event for one twenty-two Federal Street for site plan review. However, their legal counsel asked to have. Their legal counsel asked to have the, uh, the appearance postponed, so that's gonna be set for a different meeting. We've got a right of first refusal for the Zekewich family on Cold Spring Street. That's a piece of property that, uh, was here for an A and R review, wasn't it? Last time, two weeks ago?
Uh, recently, yeah.
They've got a purchase and sale contract on it now and they're asking to have it removed from chapter status. And then we've got one A and R on Muncell Street for Mr. Robert Berry. Our note, our regular additions with consent to the matter, uh, consent to the members for things that might wanna be discussed but are not gonna be voted on. The minutes from our last meeting, bills. I don't see any bills. That town plan report and a members' report with that. It'd be seven o'clock. This is, uh, a public meeting, not a public hearing, so it's just an informal discussion. And we had asked, um, to talk to you about your venue as you were going to be expanding it out into the outside of the building. Now, I don't, were you here when we initially did the site plan review on it?
Yeah.
Part of that discussion was, um, if you're going to move outside and start expanding your footprint into the, the parking lot and outside area, that we wanted to have another discussion and how, and how that was gonna possibly affect the parking and the use of the, the property. And, uh, that is in the minutes of that, that particular meeting. So, when you appeared before the select board and started talking about, uh, permission to move your activities outside, our, our concern was how, what, what are those activities? How extensive they're gonna be? And what effect they're gonna have on the parking. And we note that, uh, from, uh, the last email you sent in, you were talking about having car shows out there, which obviously are gonna be in the parking area. Uh, having a cornhole league and I don't, I'm assuming that's outside too?
That'd be in the lawn.
That'd be on the lawn area, and having various vendors.
That'd be, uh, in the lawn.
On the lawn area too? So, what is the, what is the extent of the activities that you're going to actually be doing where you're gonna be covering the parking lot?
So, the original idea, this came down, kind of changed like a lot in regards to like who, the, the possibility of, of having that, drinking, as a drinking area, it came down to like the town level effectively is the, uh, proving authority, I believe. The idea was, um, kinda twofold. Uh, one, we were looking at, we had been approached about possibly doing a car show. So, that was, you know, just like a small group of like local cars or, nothing is even after initial discussions. We were just talking about ideas of how to do that, you know, one of them was maybe have the cars, the show cars in our parking lot, so that people can walk around in the parking lot, see the cars. And, uh, parking at that point would be, um, will be utilized in our, um, neighbor's spot, um, which we had an agreement with as well as just street parking. The other side of that is, uh, has been incredibly stressful, especially the opening weekend with trying to corral people to not drink in the parking lot. It was like an exercise in futility and patience, uh, dealing with some people. So, it kinda killed two birds with one stone, uh, where now we, we still advertise, you know, drinking in the parking lot, drinking in the grass or inside. But now we don't age as quickly as before and we start here trying to pardon people. But that's where it is at the end.
We haven't changed anything from our operational standpoint. What this gives us is just, and, and we're not publicly saying, hey, we can drink in the parking lot, right? That's not our goal.
It's not the alcohol that we're concerned about.
Yes, I understand.
That was the select board's concern.
Yep.
Ours is, do we need to, to look at the traffic plan? Cause one of the things that we looked at when we did the site plan review was whether or not a traffic plan was gonna be necessary for your business. We said, no, the amount of activity that they're going to have there is probably not gonna, uh, come to the point where we're gonna need to have a traffic engineer look at it and make sure that there's gonna be adequate flow through there and there's gonna be in the parking places and that type of thing. But now you're talking about possibly expanding the venue. I mean, like, the things I'm thinking about, I, I was at a car show at Connecticut Valley Brewery in South Windsor, Connecticut this weekend. You couldn't squeeze another automobile.
Sure.
In that lot.
Yep, yep.
They had it all over the grass and all the parking and there was people all over the place.
Yep.
And it was a, it was a mob scene.
So, these will be one-off events. The, these are not gonna be things that we're gonna be doing every weekend, right? I mean, car show will probably be twice a year, maybe? And a lot of times could be on a Sunday where there's, there's no other business traffic flow there other than soccer fields. So, we're, we're not trying to congest that area anymore. And we understand where you're coming from. We do, we really do. But that, we're, would we love for it to be every weekend? Of course. But that, that's not gonna be the case, right? I mean, we're, these vendor fairs we're talking about are gonna be once a month. We're, if, if we could get our traffic flow to the point where this would be a real discussion, we would love it. But we don't think we're there yet, you know, and, and, and I guess my question would also be, when we're open and when those soccer fields are in use, who is responsible? When all of our customers are parking in our parking lot? And the soccer fields are being used and, and, and we want them to be used. I mean, that, that kind of, and it pisses our traffic flow at times too, you know, and, uh, I guess, we don't wanna be a concern either at all, you know, and, and, uh, I did meet with Steve Williams earlier, uh, or last week and just said, is this a concern? Are people complaining? Because we will deal with it if they are, but, you know, we're in front of you tonight and just, we wanna be good neighbors. That's the bottom line, you know, we, we, you know, we're less in beer and business here. We're trying to grow our business. And we just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not getting people upset about what we're doing, what we're trying to do, right? And our, our business model hasn't changed. Nothing's really changed. Yes, we're trying to increase traffic flow and patronage and doing things with the town, by the way. We, we've done quite a few events here with the town. We had the Belch Town Little League kickoff, which was a huge success, and we love that. And, uh, we, we have so many different events that we've got planned, uh, you know, and we're just, but we wanna make sure everyone's happy with what we're doing. That's, that's the bottom line.
I don't know too much about this, the soccer, et cetera. Has there been mention, the soccer?
Yeah.
Have, has there been a nation with them?
No, I don't.
So, it, it is what you're saying is that.
All I'm saying is there's street traffic. There's, there's, there's times when we're open and they're on the soccer fields, and that's fine. And we've had conversations with authorities in town and it's not an issue.
Yeah, the issue is the same, like, if, if people were complaining about there being a ton of cars, it might even have to say that it's the soccer.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm, I wasn't really able to connect the dots there. Okay.
And by a ton of cars, are we talking an issue about on-street parking?
I wouldn't say so.
Or, or just, or just the amount of traffic?
It's not, it's on-street park.
It's the on-street parking?
And I'm not saying it's an issue, I'm saying it's, it's not overflow from us, it's the soccer.
And you're playing soccer?
What's up?
We're playing soccer, are any of them parking in your lot? I'm assuming they're off?
Probably, uh, I'm not gonna.
No guarantees.
There are lots with PM dead, just went by there and they're all in the street. It's like, oh, they're not open that lot.
Well, the owner does a good job of putting signs out to make sure that, uh, people aren't parking on his side of the road and, uh, which helps. Yeah.
There's gonna be live music too? I mean, I'm looking at your.
Every week there's live.
Your Facebook postings. And, uh, you already have a tent up, right?
Yeah, we had a tent at, uh, last year as well until winter.
So, and that's gonna stay out all summer?
Yep.
So, you're assuming that that's gonna fill up? It's gonna be?
I mean, that'd be great.
We hope. But that's typically on a Saturday night from five to eight o'clock when no other businesses are open and their soccer fields are empty.
It's, uh, you had mentioned that you had an agreement with your neighbor, he was the parking lot.
So.
Right.
Is this a, some type of license, some agreement?
No.
It's just. We have a written agreement with them.
We have a written agreement.
We got, we got that when we, when you approved the site plan originally.
Then we do, we do pay for that. For the excess parking, we pay for that.
All right, I, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, sure, no.
That it, it wasn't an agreement that was hanging in the wind.
Nope.
Somebody could just change their mind.
Don't make sure that before we came, before you guys, that we had any writing and we, I, it should be written somewhere.
They're gonna get different business hours, don't they?
They do, yep. Yeah, there's a, I think a really small overlap, uh, on Friday maybe.
Basically, they're not open on weekends and that's when you're gonna do your thing.
Yeah, if we were, yeah.
We started this off as the brewery with, um, entertaining the public within the four walls of the brewery. And that's what we were looking at when we were considering the traffic. Things are changing. The, the business is expanding. There's a, there's a tent, there's other venues going on now. They've got bands, live music.
We've always had the lawn and the tent.
Yeah, I don't understand where this is, where the four walls is coming from because from day one, we always had the outdoor space as part of our venue.
It was always licensed.
Yeah, I remember that.
It is licensed with the ADCC.
I, I don't remember there being much of an emphasis on, on the outdoor use of the property. I thought it was gonna be mostly on the indoor. And that's why there was a specific reference that we put in the minutes of, if you are going to expand the venue of the property, we might wanna be looking at that the, the traffic flows in there once again. So, the question is, do we think that what they're doing now is gonna expand the use of that particular facility to the extent that the parking that's available right there, that, that's there now, is not gonna handle that business without overflowing and, and creating other issues?
Yeah.
It sounds as though it will be hard to know until they try it.
So, you're gonna, and we're gonna build it and then see what happens?
I mean, what's the, there's no issue with people parking for the soccer games. Why would there be an issue for it if there is overflow for people to park on the street?
Cause you're undergoing a site plan review for your business and they're not.
If, if. The site plan always included the outdoor space, I guess, is what, maybe I'm missing something here, but. It's, you know, our indoor occupancy is forty-nine people. So, we have thirty-one parking spots with an open forward re-vent with sound scape that we paid for for extra parking that can handle the outside entertainment, which we've done since day one. I guess I, I'm trying to figure out why this is now, unless there was some kind of disconnect somewhere, we've always had that outdoor space as part of our plan.
Where it came from was your appearance before the select board to ask for, uh, the, the additional venue, the sort of alcohol.
That was not.
So, we, I, I was sitting in the back of the room, so.
It was the parking lot that we asked for.
The parking lot, and that's.
So, that's the, that's the additional.
That's what we're concerned about is the parking lot, not the alcohol.
Okay.
The additional bodies they're.
So, you're okay though that we have the tent out there and, cause we've had that out there since day one?
As long as we're gonna handle the number of people and the number of cars.
Correct. In the parking lot.
So, it sounded like you were expanding your venue.
What we're trying to do is just allow ourselves to have a little bit more flexibility when we have one-off events like when we had the polar plunge back in January where people were in the parking lot and we were trying to control people drinking in the parking lot because the ADCC was against that, which is when we started filing or talking with the select board to, is there a way? Actually, we went to the ADCC, they said that's now on the town to handle. So, that's where we started this discussion. And again, we do not want people drinking in our parking lot all day, every day. That is not the case. The case is just, I, I get that, I get that.
That's not what we're really worried about.
You're worried about the parking.
Yeah.
If we, if we eliminate the parking in the parking lot, if we have things like the car show or the polar plunge, that's what you're concerned about, right? Gotcha.
Well, and, and the difficulty for me, Dan, is that these are one-offs, so.
They're one-offs.
So, so it's not like you could do a, a parking, um, study and, and, uh, analysis on the car show. And then a separate parking study and analysis on the polar plunge.
Cause they don't know what the turnout's gonna be.
Well, you don't know, these are completely different things. The fact that they are one-offs and, um, they're not so periodic as to be predictable.
Right.
Really falls this into, you know, almost like, um, the Belcher Town Fair kind of situation that's once a year or, or something else. It's a transient thing. However, however, um, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to, to ensure is that we don't get to the point where there are complaints and the police are being called and there is an issue. And I, you know, that's, that's where we need to kind of understand, not only where you are, but where you're headed.
I, I wanted to hear an articulation of what they're gonna be doing too, cause we don't have any of this written down.
Right, that's a, that's a good point.
So, they're here, they're saying, and, and that's the evidence. That's what we.
Other than parking, is there anything else though from a, a nuisance, noise, light? So, what, what hours? You, you mentioned five to eight for one event.
That's just typically when the music is.
That's when the music is?
It's, it stops today.
On a Saturday.
So, the, the, do the car shows end at eight P M?
We have never had a car show. We are just entertaining.
Okay, that's right, you're right. You are entertaining, okay. Are there, are there any other nuisance issues other than traffic and, and parking? From a, a noise, lights, um, uh, visual laser shows type of things? No, I'm serious.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm trying, I'm trying to project and, and understand, um, both that they know what we would be concerned with and that we have some ideas to, um, where they're headed or, or perhaps it's a case of continue with what you're, you're doing until such time as there is a complaint with the police or, or whatever. And then, and then say, that's the limit of how many people or how much activity or how much whatever. You know, it's kind of a draw the line at, at the point where we get the first co-, uh, community complaint.
Well, I, I was hoping and looking forward to them explaining what they're going to do and then we would make our, uh, uh, decision whether or not we thought that that was gonna require any additional investigation into the traffic on the, on the site.
Okay.
And then if there isn't, based on what they've had to say, we're all set for.
We're done and we're, and we're happy, okay?
You know, and if the situation changes in the future because, you know, they, they're a lot more successful than everybody figured and, um.
Then we'll come back.
Then we can come back and have another discussion. We just wanna stay one step ahead of what's going on down there.
Absolutely, yep.
Did anybody else have anything else that they needed to discuss to clarify the situation?
Have you ever filled the sound scape parking lot during your, ever?
Uh, the, I think the only times that we have filled it were likely our opening day, uh, the polar plunge and the Little League kickoff. Those are the only three times that we've had extensive cars since we've been open in August.
Even, even when you had your events in your parking lot?
We have never had an event in our parking lot besides the polar plunge, yeah.
Do you know how many spaces?
It looks to me like there's probably about thirty over there.
There's thirty-one.
Correct, thirty-one spots with another twenty-five that we have contracted with SoundScape.
That's all right. Is there an issue with our patrons parking on the street?
There isn't a street park?
There's no street parking.
No, there, there's not a street park.
Only that it demonstrates inadequacy. Is, uh, is there a lot, on-street parking or?
There, yes, I thought there was none, no on-street, but when I raised the subject of landscaper trucks blocking a lane, it turns out that there's only a winter ban, um, on-street parking. And the rest of the time, I mean, the D V W was there and the police were there and it's like.
Yeah, un- unless it's marked, no parking.
Right.
There's on-street parking. Um, that's not the issue, otherwise the soccer.
Right, I just wanna make sure that that was the case, that this isn't an issue.
Uh, in the police, you know, i- if it ever was an issue, the police department would make sure, knock on your door and say, uh, can you manage this?
Which we would.
Well, if it impedes traffic.
Yeah.
Now, I always thought that the, the, the rule was too that there was no street parking unless there was a designated, you know, parking, you know, by, you know, where, uh, there was lines on the street and such or permission had been specifically given for it, but there's nowhere in the bylaws that it says that.
Yep.
Yeah.
The only time I've known that anybody to step in is to get when there's an impediment to traffic.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, based on what you've, you've had to say, I, I don't think that there's, uh, any concerns that we have at this point. We'll see how, how it goes.
Let's hope business is good enough so that you have to come back and have, you miss it.
Yeah, wait to come see your smiling faces.
Well, I'll come in the same car.
We'll come in the Ubers.
Yeah, if you, if you're open on Tuesdays, we could just reconvene.
That's under discussion, by the way.
Are you proposing off-site meeting?
Thank you for having a conversation with us in the way, you know, our interest, concerns on this matter. Did there anything else that you wanted to throw in?
We're here.
Thanks.
I sincerely hope that someday you have a big enough problem that you get to look at new building plans or something.
Yeah, we would love to kickstart the state school party with that.
I'm pulling for it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy night.
You too.
All right, our, the seven-twenty matter, uh, again, got, got continued. Uh, is it gonna be two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks, twenty, twenty-seven.
The next matter then is not a timed event. It's a withdrawal from, uh, chapter status for Stephen Rodney Darling Zekewich on Cold Spring Street. The map, two fifty-nine lot twenty-nine and a portion of two fifty-nine lot thirty-eight, remove five point one five one nine acres from chapter status. And we've got a, a contract. I'm gonna have to step off on this. These are butters across the street from you. So, I'm conflicted out and gonna turn this matter over to Elizabeth and I'll be right outside.
So, I don't know if everybody else has plowed through all, all these varying documents and had the same trouble that I had, which was coming up with the acreage that. Well, no, it, it's partly because it's unclear whether or not it's the entire property. And I, I came in a little early and Doug and Jackie and I were looking at it and that, that we could not reconcile. Part of it, the reason it's confusing is that the downloaded G I S map doesn't show, doesn't reflect the A and R that happened in April, although this is it. But again.
Is that in there or is this in there?
Uh, the A and R is.
They're both, that's, the G I S doesn't catch up with, uh, the results of A and Rs as quickly as.
Yeah, they're, those in there.
So.
But you have the A and R.
We have the A and R, which is.
Oh, I see, okay.
And if you sprint to put on your magnifier, you can make out the square footage of the area of those.
So, there's, there's one piece that says to remove five point one five one nine acres. The notice of intent talks about, um, eight.
Yeah, so that is for lots, all of it, all of it, twenty-nine and thirty-eight as a three or four.
But then if you add those up, it comes to nine something acres, nine point oh seven. So, I haven't been able to figure out.
I didn't get, cause I've, I've got current acre classifieds at point one and one point two-three, add that together, it gets acres removed, eight point three-four. So, that, that's on the page.
Right, but then the, the letter from Andrea says, removal of the parcel known as map two fifty-nine lot twenty-nine, which is one point two three acres and a three point nine two one nine acre portion of map two fifty-nine lot thirty-eight, also known as lot two.
Two, yep. That's after the A and R.
Right.
Yep.
Well, you, if you add those two numbers together, you don't get eight point, uh.
Well, it's the portion, isn't it?
But what is the portion?
Well, she doesn't call out the, the specific portion, does she?
Yeah, she does. Yeah, I think so. It says, the portion, a portion of map two fifty-nine lot thirty-eight of three point nine two one nine acres, which is the exact amount that's on here for, for part two. So, post, sub, after they've divided it, it's the northern portion.
Right. But if you add that.
Three point nine two.
To one point two three.
You get five point, five one nine, which is what it says. I think I just was trying to do, but none of it worked. None of it's all the same on the same piece.
Okay, uh, so, A and R lot two, three point nine two one two. Plus the existing building lot of one point two three.
Okay, that does.
As you said, equals five point one five.
One, two, yeah.
So, those two and then three point one, one five six six.
Okay.
One, I, okay, I get it.
And then that all adds up to the eight point three four.
You shouldn't just make this line. You shouldn't just make this line dark.
Okay. Well.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
It takes how many people to do it?
But we had our calculators out.
We were just looking at, it was written such that.
It's not clear.
Okay. Well, given that, anyone have, shall we start? Thoughts, Len? Again, this is a case where we recommend, we don't make the decision, we make a recommendation to the select board. You know, given that it's five acres and it's in the area that is, does not abate a big conservation area.
They're going to have the frontage on Cold Spring to do whatever they want to do on that northern lot.
Yep.
And so the other lot that they're going to leave behind is three point one five whatever six-six, they're going to have the frontage there too.
Like Sears, yep.
It does abate a very nice piece of privately owned property that we have no idea what the future is.
So it's not concerted land.
It's not concerted land. It would be premature for us to consider.
Recommend it, let's be purchased in anticipation of.
In anticipation, exactly. And to be honest, what this gives us for the money is nothing unique about that particular piece of property. It doesn't house any kind of exotic animals or flora. You know, there's nothing so different about this that we would want to isolate this from all the other properties. My recommendation would be to recommend that we do not invoke the right of first refusal.
That would be my thought too. I mean, it's this person here who's making the purchase. It's in a butter who's buying.
And I don't know that that's germane necessarily, you know?
No, they could then sell.
They could then.
Yeah.
You on?
No, I don't see me.
And if you see, okay. And Len, you're also okay with saying we will?
I'm fine.
Okay. Well, I am too. So now I have to remember how to phrase this because we have to vote. So we are voting, a move that we vote to recommend that the town not exercise its right of first refusal on the parcels at Cold Spring Street, map two fifty-nine lot twenty-nine and map two fifty-nine lot thirty-eight, to remove five point one five one nine acres from chapter.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, I move to a vote then. All in favor of?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have, or is it the nays? No, I said, I worded it so that the ayes.
So four zero.
Or zero. Zero. So, back to you.
Makes matter on the agenda is an A and R on Muncell Street with Robert Berry. The applicant is Robert Berry. Since they all honor is Robert Berry. Robert Berry assigned the application. Mr. Doug, you want to give us an overview? What this comes up to?
Multiple, well-established lawsuits and town meetings. Muncell Street definitively ends where it shows that it ends. The metal section of it was discontinued in nineteen oh eight.
That's the end of the pavement, but this is the end of.
That's the end of the actual public way.
So their fifty feet of access is here and then it hangs a hard left.
And it hangs a hard left, so.
And this is all wetlands.
Yeah, largely wetlands in there. This is the headwaters of Hot Brook that goes down to the hot line. Yeah, these three parcels and so the plan shows him creating an estate lot from the westernmost two parcels with this little peninsula that gives him his frontage on the very end of Muncell Street.
So it's this passage that gets it to a bigger acreage than these two combined in a way?
Well, yeah, I mean, combines those two and then adds that.
Because this dimension is not the same as that. I guess maybe because. Well, this says four ninety-five and this is five forty-five.
Now, this is an actual survey. So, anyway, that's it. And there's the full side over there. So, yeah, there are like two perennial streams and a lot of wetlands along that little map.
So the culverts are currently not there.
Not on his.
Culverts are under the discontinued road.
The discontinued road is now property of the Oasis Association, open space. And so he has to go alongside it with, and he would have to do a lot of fill and replication and culverts and bridges and.
We can't fill the wetlands.
Out of curiosity, the Oasis Drive, is that open space, open to the public?
Right now, it's owned by the association, so they don't have to let the public on it.
Okay, because they do have it posted as private, no trespassing, cameras in use.
That might not be them.
The land itself is posted.
I see that, yeah.
And so that's why it turned around.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went down to take a look also and got out of the car at the end of the asphalt and started walking and the posted signs were. Permeated that area. I made no mistake about it, that the access was not open to the public.
So I started looking at the subdivision regulations in terms of adequacy of access at the time that the subdivision is made in terms of whether or not frontage is illusory or not. And this, the NAS General Law forty-one, section eighty-one, has a whole gazillion subsections. But very specifically, anyone else says subdivision shall mean the division of the properties, et cetera. And I'm going to cut to the chase here. It says, at the time when, and A and R, where you don't need to do the full-blown subdivision, is if at the time when it is made, when the subdivision division is created, every lot within the tract so divided has frontage on a public way, a couple of other things, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grade, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land. And then later down in section eighty-one M, they talk about specifically fire access, police, municipal vehicles, et cetera. The more I looked at this, the more I felt that in its current configuration and with its current undeveloped nature, that it doesn't provide adequate access such that reasonable frontage access is afforded. If there were specific plans agreed to with the Conservation Commission that here is how fire trucks, adequate access, et cetera, would be afforded between the end of Muncell and the building envelope. If that were in existence now, that would be then a different story from. I don't have any way to get across from point A to point B. Or at least I haven't enumerated any way to get across from point A to point B. So I'm saying, as it is presented right now, I'm thinking it is an illusory frontage.
I talked to Sarah Fortune, the conservation administrator, and Mr. Berry did bring this plan down to that office.
Okay.
And she advised him that the way it's laid out right now, that it would not be adequate access. The only way to access the lot as it's configured would be to come off of the road up at the top of it and go all the way around the wetland and come in off the top.
But that's not what's presented here.
That's not what's presented here. So he must know that there's some issue here. Because he's been to the Conservation Office and they advised him that the way it's laid out, it would likely not get through the the commission, but it hasn't been presented to them yet. So that would be just flimsy advice, but that really sticks with me too, that if they know that there's an issue and they know that there's this concept of illusory access, why are we being presented this plan in its current configuration? Just to see what's going to happen, what we're going to do?
Can I ask a question that I went looking on the registry of deeds for this? There's a block in that passageway, which would be essentially the only access to the building envelope. A land access agreement, which grants easements rights, but it's, they haven't, they don't own the land, correct?
That is, there's a fifty-foot easement where he's showing that connector. And that was for WD Kohl's to be able to reach their property. But it was supposed to be on the open space where the old road was. And it got for some reason mistakenly put up there. So Kohl's had an easement that they never used because they kept using the former street. But Kohl's is out of the picture now.
Okay, so they were the ones who were granted the easement, not the, not this.
I don't know if the language says in successors.
And even if it did, that easement is within the proposed configuration of lot sixty-eight C.
Right.
That easement goes through the, crosses the two streams and goes through the wetlands.
Yep.
Right, I mean, that just seems.
That's just an easement, that's not a road.
Right, it seems as though it's adding to the unlikeliness of it being really a viable.
I did check the delinquent taxpayer list on this one. And it says that zero Muncell Street is from the last list that we had from the Assessor's Office. It was on taxes, but it says that if this is, if this is in fact zero Muncell, I'm assuming it is, that it has the owner listed as Eugenie Berry, not Robert.
What's the date of that list?
Twenty twenty-four. That's the last one I got.
Yeah.
Maybe we need our list updated.
Yeah, we need the list updated because, yeah, I believe that was Robert Berry's sister. And so he now owns it all.
She owned it.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. When I looked at all of it earlier.
So this, we don't know if it's on the tax list or not.
We don't know that. But this isn't a permit, so.
Yep, you're right.
I'm of the opinion that reading MGL forty-one, subsection eighty-one L and eighty-one M, that this is not a viable property as it is presented to us right now. And therefore, it could be subdivided, but it would require subdivision designs and rules and regulations. It does not meet the A and R requirements.
It meets the statutory requirement for subdivision. But it is an illusory access.
Correct. And therefore, the A and R exemption is denied, would be denied.
Thank you for looking that up. I didn't think to do that.
Anybody else have any questions on this? Just to go through the regular review, it does have a locus on in the upper right. The order of record is identified up in the upper right, all the adjacent owners are identified. Otherwise, it's a properly prepared plan that meets zoning requirements. However, it's the opinion of the board that it's an illusory access and therefore should not receive our endorsement. Does anybody else have any other thoughts on that or is there agreement?
I agree.
Everybody agrees? We'll make a motion then that we deny approval of the A and R as presented as the building lot, the parcel that's being described as constitutes an illusory access. The frontage that's presented on a public way does not give adequate physical access to the property because of the nature of the topography and the types of soils that it has to pass through. Can I get a second?
A second.
This was a second motion. It's made a second and further discussion motion. Well, now should we vote this to approve it and then deny it? That's what we usually do it.
Yeah, if you want to do it that way, but you already made a motion to the negative.
I would suggest that we rescind the motion to the negative.
All right, I'm going to rescind my motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the A and R.
We then take our vote.
It needs to be seconded again.
Oh, I'll second it.
Michael seconded the second motion, so the motion made it seconded. Now, any further discussion on the motion?
I don't understand exactly what's happening.
Well, I made a motion to deny it and what we usually do is make a motion to approve them and then deny them.
Why do we do that order?
So it's not twice.
That way then we can be more explicit in defining why the denial was created. You don't have to include everything in the wording of the motion. You then say the denial is based on, boom ba, boom ba, boom ba, boom ba, boom ba. And you have more flexibility in your presentation of your thoughts and your references. So the motion is only a few words. Should we do it? No. I mean, should should we do it? And we vote no. And then you say this is denied because of, and then we can.
So we're not approved, you said we.
We vote to we vote to approve and we fail to fail to.
Correct, correct. But that gives us it gives us a better better opportunity of presenting our thinking.
So you you pose it as an approval and we all say nay.
Correct.
Okay, got, now I am just gonna vote approval, why don't we just?
Yeah, I've actually found it easier to to keep clear this way.
Okay, yes.
Because if you have negative motions, then then people get confused of how they voted and.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
All right, and as part of the discussion, I'll I'll indicate that I'm going to vote no because even though it it meets the statutory requirements for an A and R, that the access that's been shown here on a public way is actually illusory because it does not provide physical access to the property that or not the lot would be. Does anybody else want to make comments? No?
I I I would, when we get to that point, I would like to specifically include MGL forty-one subsection eighty-one L and eighty-one M as references to that illusory access.
Well, let's make that part of the discussion. That's the reason why you're gonna be voting no, is because of Mass General Law, chapter forty-one, subsection eighty-one, M and.
L and eighty-one L.
L and M. Which in there, it it says that that there has to be actual physical access to the property.
At the time.
At the time.
Correct, at the time the subdivision is is requested.
And it's all three of the processes.
I'm only referring to this this one request for subdivision.
All right, anybody else want to make comments?
No.
All right, so any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor. I hear none. That was opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Let the record show five zero zero.
Zero five zero.
No, no, show zero five zero, zero five zero. All right, read the map.
The tree is the where they they only show the wetlands there where they're entirely.
Well, they they show it here as well, but they don't show the streams. But they do say environmental considerations were not approximate and and, you know, all of that stuff.
I've got the notes. From April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, these have been previously distributed. And people have had a chance to make any additions, deletions, addits, changes that that they wanted to. Does anybody want to make any additional changes that it's changes, you know, tonight? Right now, the motion that we approve, the minutes is prepared, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a summary to second?
Second.
Seconded by Elizabeth, motion made, seconded, further discussion of the motion. Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
I will do it to five zero zero, one extension. Sorry, so it would be. Four zero one. I wasn't here either, but I'm gonna sign it. I I follow the theory that we're approving the minutes, I don't have to pick in order to approve the minutes.
But you can vote, right?
Huh?
You can vote. You you must have abstained if you weren't here at the meeting.
No, I wasn't physically here. You ignore my vote.
Oh, yeah, well, then both of you would have stayed, right?
My under my understanding is that you you can vote for or against the minutes, even if you are not present at the meeting.
Do you have to watch the the?
No, no, if you've read the minutes and and they comply.
That's always been my understanding also, is this is a ministerial action to approve the minutes.
Fine, me, yes.
You don't have to be in present in order to approve the minutes. But there are other people that disagree and they usually abstained, and that's fine too. We have enough people for.
You can do it however you wish.
Get approved and it's fine.
It's a tomato, tomato.
We can have the town later report. Let's do it.
Well, town meeting should have happened yesterday, but it's coming up on the thirty-first now. The council reviewed our proposed zoning bylaw changes, made, you know, made some incidental recommendations. And I said, I believe you, go ahead, accept them all. Subdivision regulations, the first meeting in June, we're going to have that public hearing, advertised it. So if you, I should I should actually make a point of getting everything to you that you're going to be voting on.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Will the bylaw changes at the town meeting will decide at the next meeting? No.
No, no, no.
The town meeting is gonna come up before the next meeting.
Town meeting's on thirty.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
We will have a meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so at that time, we can decide who's gonna.
Who's gonna do the reports instead.
Do the reports, okay.
Yeah. All right, so what else do I need? Oh, the site plan for one twenty-two Federal Street, we'll see them next meeting. The only comments tie and bond and conservation had was maybe move the parked cars to the other side, where they'll be away from the wetland and it it would just work better, so.
If you move to the other side, though, wouldn't that interfere with the loading of the gasoline when the trucks come?
I think they'd have to just move the cars out of the way and then the truck in it. Because as it is, the truck has to pull in and then back out again, or back in and then pull out.
I'm sure.
It's not easy.
In logic, that could be the reason why they wouldn't want to put them on that side, they put them on that side.
Yeah.
Is it is it is this a recommendation or a mandate that they move?
Recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, that's all it is, yeah.
So we'll we'll wait and see what the opponent's attorney has to say.
Yeah. It's grant season, June fourth is the deadline, and I'm working on a couple. I'm working with Ty and Bond to get an estimate for water and sewer down Turkey Hill Road to the anytime fitness area. So for state schools parcel D. And then it would be able to open up some of the other properties over there too. So in the name of economic development. And I'm going to apply for a comprehensive zoning review because it hasn't been done in thirty-three years. And, you know, so if we get funded for that, we'd hire a consultant to do the work. And you could just be prepared for everyone in town to hate you first because.
So we're to the job.
Changing it over there is perfect, that's wonderful, but no, not there, yeah.
Do you expect a lot of changes?
Well, I don't know. I mean, the whole bylaw, I think we need to kind of seriously look through. You know, it's it's come up amongst you before that it's obsolete and it doesn't meet our current needs. It doesn't meet, you know, the technology or state laws that that show up. And it doesn't really correspond to our zoning. I mean, our our our, well, the map doesn't really correspond to anything useful. And it doesn't correspond to any of our our plans, the whole master plan that we've been updating regularly and plans that other groups have, so.
So this isn't just a looking at.
Sorry.
The zoning bylaws themselves, we're gonna be looking at the map too.
Yes.
The whole map.
It's part of it, yeah, it's part of it.
Yes.
So.
That would be a big undertaking, I think.
Well, it is, that's why I.
Invite the public in and ahead of time and all that stuff.
The use the use of the land has changed over the last three decades.
Yeah. The whole town has changed. You know, we used to have an agricultural zone and medicine, but now it's just more house lots. So, yeah, you know, assuming we get the get the grant and we hire someone who would pretty much do the work, do the public input process and stuff, which obviously we'd still be in the middle of because you'd still have to have public hearings and make your recommendation to town meeting, so. But, you know, if things get too reckless, you can always just say, hey, it's the select board. Go see the town manager. I I on my way over here, I I said to myself, well, I haven't been down Carriage Drive in a couple of days. I'm gonna go see if the tower's down, and so if you wanna see the Mima Tower, it's now on the ground.
Was there a cloud of toxic dust around it?
Hardly not. There were a couple of guys with yellow vests put them around, so now they just need to cut it up and haul it away.
That's good news.
Yeah, and and the old steam plant, I I heard was scheduled to be taken down this week, so. It's, you know, if not this week, next week, whatever they have to do. The MVP project. We threw all of our rancorous meetings and and frustrated our PBPC people and finally came up with a a project. And it is to create a municipal housing trust, which we needed to do anyway. How it was this tied to climate change? I think what South Hadley did to get theirs approved by the MVP folks is they have a, here's how we're helping vulnerable people deal with climate change through this section. So we'll probably look at what they came up with and craft it to meet our town and find other examples, we'll keep you posted on how that evolves.
Who's gonna run that trust?
I don't know that, that's one of the big questions we have to answer. How's it gonna be capitalized? Any preservation of the grants? Those are all things to be worked out. Because someone would have to oversee it. And that could be a sort of a collection of treasurer, town treasurer, town administrator, planner, who else, et cetera?
I had I had thought about a municipal housing trust before, but in terms of driving it into an affordable housing question. And that way you could take money from the Community Preservation Act, where they have so a certain amount has to be spent for housing, and shift that into the trust, so you would have some type of funding. But the municipal housing trust they're talking about is a very wide-ranging thing. They were talking about helping people with their rent and all kinds of stuff when they described this to the select.
Here or there? Who who described it to the select board?
Jeez, I don't remember who it was, it was a presentation.
Yeah, I mean, it's it, we haven't even started on it yet, so we don't know what what shape it'll take. But, yeah, community preservation would probably be a a primary source, I think. Lamson Brook Farm, they met last week. And they approved the survey that will be an A and R that's gonna come in here. And that's going to break up the the various sort of areas of.
Dominion.
Community farm, the enterprise area, the states, state-owned commercial farmland that is, I guess, scheduled to go over to EMDAR reasonably soon. Part Nesfield retain, which is the farmhouse on the DPW side. Oh, and the forest area, so break all those pieces up and.
In the same way that we've seen them popping up on the on the map, it's just.
Mostly, yeah, mostly, yeah, mostly. So a couple of minor shifts, like they wanted to have a hay barn be not in the commercial area, but on the parcel of the community farm. And so that is presently in the agricultural value added zone we just created, but it's attached to the parcel, you'll see it. But they're gonna have easements that go drive the visit of this stuff. Disposition of the land, other than Neski and EMDAR, is still up in the air. So it's it's a slow process and I don't know what else has to be worked out because, you know, they meet every six months or so, and we don't know what's happening immediately. Statewide Trail Access Working Group came on, there was a forum last week, and they had over a hundred people log in from across the state, several from Belcher Town. And it was, I think, really good for hearing from users, people who need the accessible trails. You know, we can't get out there because we, you know, don't have transportation or the surface is this way, or we can't, you know, decipher the signs or whatever it is. So I think there's a lot of good information that came out of that. Sort of consider them the experts because they're the ones who are gonna know what they need and don't have. Toilets is a big one, as you can imagine. You know, and porta bodies are okay as long as they're properly accessible. So you gotta have the big ones with wheelchair space. You know, you put those out there, maybe it improves it quite a bit. I think wayfinding and branding projects, those are coming along and should be winding up in the next month or so. They're down to, I think they they're refining the logo selections that the group will, committee will develop. And I'm not a, I'm not on the committee, I dodge that one. We let our communications person be the town employee on it, and she has a lot more to say and a lot more expertise. I'm gonna look at it and say, oh, yeah, it says Belcher Town, maybe, but no, no. You know, they're coming up with some designs, they're trying to incorporate history and agriculture and, you know, quaintness and all the other stuff that we like about Belcher Town. A logo that is recognizable and communicates what people are expressing their feeling of confidence. There's a whole bunch of, yeah, stuff right over there on the board that is part of that. And they had the public forum last month. So that's happening. In the town meeting, you know, reports from zoning articles, next meeting, and we decide who who's gonna stand up at the microphone and say, planning board voted five zero, five to zero to recommend this to town. And you can explain it if you want or not. Or I can, or maybe Kirk Stevens will represent the E E S E for his own change. Humorously. No, that's all I have.
The municipal housing trust. Um, the municipal, uh, housing trust. I pulled it blank because I was trying to think who was sitting there explaining it. It wasn't somebody in the U I, it was one of the select board members.
Lisa?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when they made their individual reports at the end of the meeting, she's the one that was talking about some of the trust and some of the things that they were talking about.
Yeah, she was really pushing for, um, um, community information.
She was one that was explaining it to the public and letting everybody know that it's coming.
Yeah.
So, I was there. Um, well, we were just talking about illusory access. That is part of, uh, the subdivision regulations two seventy, not bylaws.
Right.
And, um, when I was getting ready for this meeting, I did a, a Google search on that and saw that there's a lot of other towns that actually have that in their regulatory scheme for subdivisions, specifically addressing that it can, it has to be more than an illusory access.
Right.
To warn people about that. You know, it's in, in the case law, but it's not in our subdivision regulation. So I was wondering if we could look at maybe, uh, the way some of the other towns had worded that?
Yeah.
And pull it up and put it ours, in our subdivision regulation. We wouldn't have to take that to town meeting. It's just a change in the regulation. It would be a simple matter to add a little bit more language to that, so.
Yeah.
We would have a specific reference in our own subdivision regulation than if the issue comes up again.
Yeah, that's true.
But we're not just creating language we can go right to.
Yeah, that's a real good idea.
Uh, and say, you know, well, it's right there.
Yeah.
Sorry, you didn't, you know, read it, but, uh, it is.
Yeah, I did that, that's excellent.
It is case law, so it's up.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, um, I wanted to mention, um, for you was that we got the, the notice from the town manager that Mr. Plant has been designated as our alternate for special permits through June thirty of twenty twenty six. So he's good for the lawyer now. Okay. Leonard, did you have anything on the show with the water?
I went in here today.
Yeah, yeah.
And got the paperwork.
We're not ready yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, I don't mind.
It's an immediate appointment?
No, it's, it's a July first.
You don't know it, is that what it said?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So you haven't expired it yet, is it?
Not that well.
It's amazing, it just feels that way.
Yeah.
I, I just had to handle one for the animal board and, uh, they made it effective immediately and through the next year.
Oh, that made it.
So they didn't have a gap open up.
Yeah, see, this isn't vacancy, so it's just a fiscal year appointment.
That, that's the one I was talking about too. It's okay. Um, Leonard, I'm sorry, you were, you were. Nor, uh, Michael, did you have anything you wanted to list with the jury that you would bring forward? Mark?
No.
You want to bring forward for us? Uh, and the only other thing I wanted to ask about was, uh, it continues to percolate out there, the, the social marijuana use rules. Have you heard anything more about?
None of the things.
Of that being codified? So it's gonna be something we need to address for that coming into their future?
At some point maybe, but I have not gotten any message from.
All right, I was just wondering from your, your Mass Planning Board Association.
Me either, yeah.
That maybe they had something that, where the state was actually doing something with that.
Yeah.
Because I continue to see it from time to time in the newspaper that pops up.
Yeah, it just came up on Spectrum and they were just talking about this.
It's out there and they are talking about it, you know?
And this is the, the sort of accident model of bars that?
Yes.
I thought, though, you know, have marijuana cafes. The next thing. I don't have anything else. Uh, I'll make a motion in the, during the meeting. And seconded by Elizabeth, motion made, seconded, no discussion on the motion, all in favor?
All right.
I think the record show five zero zero. Mary Ann, continue to so. Oh, I forgot to mention, everybody, Mary Ann is back.
Yeah.
I should have mentioned that at the very beginning.